Here, go ahead and smile. I get, I get, once a month, I get men that come up and say, "That smells good."
It's good stuff. Good smell.
I've been wearing it for thirty years. Any remain scenes, any of those places? Obsession about second tier. About fifty, spray paint, spray paint last year six months. Really, it's, it sounds like it's just a shoot, 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 and it's it.
Give him a minute. He'll probably be walking around with no nerves.
I go for Father's Day or something like that, just what they'll do is you can buy that, you do, you get a little gift set. Father's Day, graduation, they find excuses. And I usually buy at Macy's, because I usually have the best ones. Although, I was at the airport the other day, at Christmas, I walked in, and they had, buy two bubbles, get one for each, for like a hundred and six dollars, I got a hundred and fifty dollars worth of them, so we did three of them.
Right, right.
How you doing?
Good. Good, and it's good.
Before you go, over here. When I was campaigning, I went all the way back there, and I know all of them, he is now, but I'm way through my, my pop.
Everybody could make their way to the seat. Welcome to our July 19th council meeting, thank you very much for coming out tonight. Roll call reflected on members of mayor, council, present with the exception of Councilor Reman, who will be arriving a little bit late this evening due to work obligation. First order of business is a presentation recognizing the Paint the Town program, so I'd like to call on Linda Murray if she would come forward. I'll let you do your thing first.
Yes, ma'am.
That way you don't get tired getting nervous.
Oh, I don't get nervous. I talk to you. Good evening, I don't know whether I want to stand this way, I'd rather stand and sit sideways.
Push it over that way and kind of do something.
Yeah, you can do both, how about that? We'll slide it over this way.
But I'd like to thank the mayor and council for allowing Paint the Town and Hateful Cares to showcase what has happened in our city, in our city, in May. And for everybody here, we had an amazing year, this is our fourth year. We had, I was counting and looking at all the volunteers, we had almost five hundred volunteers. I was very fortunate to meet a couple of VPs with Cortland Partners, and they wanted to come, you know, for the last couple of years. With the help of the city manager, and the community service, and all the other staff in Hateful, we were able to bring in three hundred and fifty volunteers on Wednesday, which was the day before our kickoff, Paint the Town, on Saturday. They swept this city, and you're going to see a little bit on here what they did. But I cannot even, I mean, I get goosebumps and get emotional, because it is amazing that we have three hundred and fifty people that come to our city, and they just want to serve. They've heard about Hateful, we already have Portia on board, they love Hateful, they want to do whatever they can to beautify, paint the town, educate, whatever. We have now Medicine Ollie, which is a medical real estate company that came out, and they brought sixty something people, and then we, of course, we had Cabot, which was a new, and they're right down on Virginia Avenue, and we had them to come out. So we just had Target, you know, our regular people, you know, Target came, some of the churches, Team Pelkey, H-Cots, they came. So we were just excited to see that many people coming into our city and making a difference.
Your husband's trying to get your attention.
Yes.
Dale.
Son.
Oh, excuse me. Yes, I don't have my little nose with me, they're also fair.
Oh, good.
But anyway, yeah, he keeps me straight. We also had Delta this year. We had two teams. We had Delta SM, is that right, Doty? And then we had another Delta team, I won't say they're in finance, they're not here yet, but anyway, they came out, and they worked in the yard, and painted and everything, and we just had a great time just revitalizing this city, one house at a time, one yard at a time. We actually went inside and cleaned elderly people's homes on the inside, that they no longer have family that come and see them, and they're kind of like shut-ins, because we have found that through Hateful Cares, our network through the community, there's a lot of elderly people that, you know, don't really see anybody unless we come to visit, and sometimes when we do come, when it's once or twice a month, we find out they've already fallen, they got hurt, or they're gone, they're into the nursing home or something like that, so there's so many people to thank, and we just don't have time to do that. But we're going to go ahead and show the video, I'm going to do two of them, and then we're going to recognize some people that gave us funds to buy the supplies, buy the paints, ladders, they, we had Chick-fil-A, and Johnny Pizza, and some other places that came out in Portia, donated four hundred dollars just for snacks. So we are so appreciative. When I say "we," I'm talking about Hateful Cares. If Hateful Care volunteers, y'all stand up. Okay, that was our... That included Cortland Partners, and Medicine Ollie, and there's just a whole list of them, but before I go over, just, I want to list and just name all the people, the volunteers. I want to recognize Doty. Doty did the video for us, and Jeanette took the pictures, because it's so involved, what we do, we're out there making sure, you know, the paint gets to bright house, and, you know, the yards are done, if we're helping the elderly, we have to kind of hold their hands to make sure it's okay to have people go in their house and clean their house. It's just a lot of things that are involved, and making sure supplies are rotated, what's needed, what's not needed at one house, and so forth. So we are so appreciative for Jeanette for taking those pictures, and it was a crazy day with three hundred and fifty people, Cortland Partners coming here, but we did a great job, the city did amazing. Community service guy, you know, Smitty, I just think he is just wonderful, the people at Recreation Department, they did a great, it was just a total city effort to have these people come in and want to serve our community in a positive way. So I thank you all for that, for doing that, because that brought tears to my eyes when you sent it to me after we put it together. But the people I do want to recognize tonight, and Charlie, will you help me? Cortland Partners will not be here, but they're, they're all over, they're maybe in New York or wherever they are. Portia Care Network, they have helped us, this thing's on, is it?
Yes.
Okay. They, they have been with us for the last four years, I'll get that, the last four years. They have supported us financially, volunteers, and provided snacks to us. And we'd like to recognize you today, and along with the city, well, we have a certificate from the city of Hateful as well, for your hard work, and your consideration and compassion for this community. So if y'all both would come up, okay, Alan doesn't want to come up, she's on the steering committee, but we have Madison, and we want to thank you. And we have a certificate, and a thank you from, from the city of Hateful.
The certificate is presented to Portia for your generous support of the 2016 Paint the Town program, so thank you.
And we also have a bag for you, City Hateful, and a t-shirt, and we also have, this is, this is the paintbrush, one of the mini paintbrushes that painted the house that Portia did. We, these companies that come in and want to help, we tried to dedicate a house to them, and this was their house. And it was amazing, and, you know, we have some of our, yeah, I'm not going to recognize, but we do have some of our homeowners here, and we are just so proud to, you know, you allowed us to come and serve you. So we want to thank Madison and the whole Portia Care Network for doing such an amazing job, and being great stewards of this city. Okay, next, I'd like to recognize Medicine Ollie, and Medicine Ollie, Richard, I guess you're going to kind of John's not here, they had five houses that it did. Actually, I want to let you know, we did eleven houses, actually six. We did eleven houses this year, from painting, to repair, to major repair, to cleaning inside the house, taking down gutters, and putting mailboxes up, some of the things that used to need to be done, helped some of these people, and we were there to serve. So we would like to recognize Richard's company, Medicine Ollie, for doing such a fantastic job to stepping up and taking on ownership of that many houses. I want to tell you just quickly, we had one house that we, we, I'd already talked to Medicine Ollie about a year ago, so there was a house that was included, and the lady wanted, she said, "Oh, my back porch is about to fall in, can you help me?" Fixed income, she's been recognizing this city for a long time. It was Myrtle Zappa, and we were able to tear, they were, I say "we," I didn't do anything but stand around, but they tore down her back porch, and in the midst of her tearing down her porch, she, you know, was going through cancer and suffering, and, you know, was close to her end of her journey. She passed away, but we're, we're, we're very happy that...
We finished the job. She passed away because we handled it. Because we felt like that's what Earl would want.
Richard, thanks for everything you do, not just this, but you're always there when Hateful needs to help.
What? I said, "I want you to stand in the picture."
Why?
Because she started crying.
Send my phone to your head.
Yeah, and they get, yeah, I have to tell you, these plaques, Richard did these plaques, so he's kind of picked out the one he wants, Medicine Ollie.
There has to be some hers. Plus, Richard does all the pressure washing in his name of...
Yeah.
Can't spend any Paint the Town money on things like that, so...
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff that a lot of people do on their own, so we thank you.
I'm going, real quickly, I think we brought, I think fifty-three people down, almost everyone lives above the Peachtree Corners area, and they paid, Medicine Ollie paid for all of the supplies, paint and everything, so really didn't come out of Paint the Town money.
Paint the Town money.
And they actually, they bought all their own food too, so this was just an add-on that worked out great, and I think they'll probably be back in a couple of years, because we rotate around the different hospital organizations of communities. But, speaking about pressure washing, John's not here, I just texted him, I don't know where he's at, I guess he forgot about this, he goes, "What did I want?", I went, "Hat." I mean, city council meeting, Paint the Town, so he's probably panicking. But my son Matt's back there in the back.
Yes, stand up, Matt.
John and Matt not.
Julian, stand up, you helped, I just saw you come in.
We, we do all the pressure washing, and everybody knows it's a lot of hard work, but I actually enjoyed the heck out of it.
You better ask the other people, because it is...
I said I did.
Yeah, it's hard, it's hard work, and I'm telling you, they come home...
Julian, Julian plans, he likes pressure washing. Especially in light...
Yeah, so we do, we do thank Medicine Ollie, and we're just so happy that they came out, and we're going to keep asking for their help, so thank you. Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Like, Delta SM, Doty, please come. There's John, there's John, he's our...
He's already got everything, I'm sorry. I had to fix the air conditioner in my house before my wife got home, so...
Anyway, John is with Medicine Ollie, and he participated in such an amazing way too, and also pressure washed, and he's the go-to guy if you need something to happen, so thank you. Doty, Doty's an amazing person, and I keep saying amazing, but, you know, my girlfriend says that all the time, and now I've experienced it firsthand, but she brought a group, Delta SM, in, and they took control, they also went and bought things for the house, and they took control of the house, and it was just, it was a blessing to see what all they did. I mean, they were planting flowers, and it was just a wonderful experience to, to work with Doty and her Delta staff, and so we are so appreciative, and I'm so appreciative for you helping me with the video and everything, so you're, you're just a great light. Thank you. And, well, they don't get a plaque, they don't think you give money. Sorry.
There's a rule there.
Oh, wait a minute, Doty, I gave you the wrong one. There's two Deltas. This is the same thing. And then we have Delta Airlines, which was John's wife, Allison, and she, is she here?
Not yet.
Is she coming?
She was supposed to, but I don't know if she's going to be here.
Okay, I'm going to hold that off, just in case. Home Depot's, Terrence was going to try to come, they helped me the whole time with everything, they were right on my heels, helping me, giving me anything I want, I know just about everybody in Home Depot now, from the manager on down. I do want to extend to the city mayor and council, and to the city manager, that they want, Home Depot, Jonesboro Road, wants to partner with the city to make things happen. So I had his card, and he was going to try to come tonight, so I wanted to let you know that as well, but they have been great in helping me. Co-Sports, they do our t-shirts, and the little label on the plaque, and we have a t-shirt to give to Mr. Moss. So Todd, you would just give this to him?
Sure.
I know that you get t-shirts from the recreation, but we use him, because Todd, sometimes after work, he lives there, he's so gracious to go pick them up for me, so I thank you, Todd, for everything that you do after hours.
Does Todd get a shirt?
No.
Money next year, Todd.
Money, money. Veterans Outreach, now I was going to say, we had, these are our normal pressure washing men, but we have Veteran Outreach that came up and helped us with Doty's house, and cleaned it, pressure washed it for two days. And so we are just so thankful that y'all want to partner with Hateful Cares and make this happen.
Thank you, man.
And I had to keep, Leonard left him out there during the day, Leonard was running things, "Come on up here." And he was so hot, and he didn't have things, so I, you know, went, "Go get us something to drink," and then, and Leonard was not back there, so then I had to go get him, I said, "I'll go get him something to eat," I was crazy going to fall out on there. So we are so appreciative, and here is your, your certificate from the city, and our thank you, Lord, for your contribution.
Thank you so much.
Now, as you look to the right, join the camera.
Leonard, look up. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Hi, sorry.
It's okay, come on up here. Delta Airlines, as I said, they also, they worked, they, they cleaned, I'm telling you, they were cutting trees down, trees down, I mean debris everywhere, they worked so hard, and, I mean, just anywhere they needed to be, it was just one, I'm not going to say amazing, it was wonderful, I'm going to say amazing a lot. So I'd like to give the certificate and a t-shirt for you to give to, you know, maybe they want to hang it up in your office, I doubt it, but anyway, here's a, here's a certificate from the city, and from the mayor, and the city.
Thank you. T-shirt. Thank you.
No t-shirt.
Oh, t-shirt, okay.
No money there.
Now, they want you to look to the right, over there.
Oh.
Smile for that camera.
I haven't done that in a while. Sorry.
Allison is our backbone in Hateful Cares, she does all the behind-the-scenes computer work and keeps us on...
Lets us know when we need to be...
When we need to go, and what we need to bring.
Okay, also, we have volunteers, which was...
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. The next group has always been here, for the last four years, she puts together her little group and everything, and I want to recognize Team Pelkey. Cheryl started at the very beginning of this and said, "Okay, I'm going to get me a group, I'll get my own group," and she just, you know, took control of it, and...
Not sure.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure, but anyway, she gets the job done, she has wonderful people. Team Pelkey people, stand up, please. Our mayor, our mayor has served under Team Pelkey, but however, this year, he had to serve with Richard.
I wish your son did.
Yeah, yeah, and I think he would rather paint than go around and moving ladders and paint.
I'll paint, actually.
But anyway, we do thank you, Mayor Holman, because you, I mean, I wanna say this. You're over and above with Team Pelkey. You're over and above with this city. The time you dedicate, uh, it is just amazing that you take, you have twenty-four hours out of the day. And you serve twenty-four hours for this city of hateful. And I am proud to call, you know, that you're our friend.
Don't get a cry.
Give him a sing-along.
That's why he has all that now.
They want us over here. Yeah, we're competing for...
Okay, let's do this one.
Photograph space.
All right.
Do that, get both now?
Yeah, you've got to.
Look that way, then look this way.
How about we just...
Thank you very much. Does it, does it go forward? It'll be on YouTube. That's Cheryl. Uh, the next group has always been here to serve as well. And that is H-Cops. Julie here?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Is Clay?
They were on their way, I don't know what happened.
There's no parking.
There's no parking.
Oh, no parking, okay. Well, uh, all right, Cherylene, come on up here. Uh, H-Cop has been wonderful. They actually, I gave them a house that, uh, J.W. Bright, which was a mechanic that worked on the police cars, fire motorcycles.
General mechanic.
Yeah, yeah. And, um, he's now left alone. His wife has passed on. And he cleans up that street he lives on and everything. But he's getting up in age, and his house started deteriorating. And we talked to him, and he needed some help. And so, H-Cop jumped in and said, "We want that house to do." So, we are so appreciative that you did wonderful. And also, Madison Ollie did the repair, would not repair. They replaced his back porch, because we got on it and found that it was rotted. So, we couldn't have that for an elderly person to be sitting there or going out there, because he would sit out on his back porch. So, they replaced the front back porch. And Hateful Cares bought him a chair. And, of course, the painting, but, uh, anyway, he's a happy little camper there. So, we thank H-Cops. And, um, I guess you wanna take a picture?
Yeah.
H-Cops has, uh, we had seventeen people out this year. And we are thrilled that we had that many folks show up to help. Of course, you know, uh, Doty is, all H-Cops, please stand up. And this year, we have thirteen people going through the plow and ski. And so, next year, we will have more people out paying.
Thank you. Um, I have to say something. This year, this lady was my sidekick, kid, the whole time. And we was absolutely just warm slap-out every day. From the three-hundred-and-fifty to the other hundred-and-fifty and almost two-hundred. I mean, so, we really, uh, we were tired. I mean, I'm afraid to admit it, because, I mean, but we, we were out there and really serving and making a difference. And I think, I thank you for doing that for me, helping me and all my other Hateful Cares. Betty Morgan, Betty, stand up. Betty, she, she stays at the carriage house. I have to recognize some of our, our City of Hateful people that just come out and they serve, serve, serve. Betty Morgan, she sat at, stayed at the carriage house every day for the whole period. And we actually went about eight, nine days. She sat there, uh, anybody walked in, she served them. If we needed something, she had it ready. She kept us on, you know, target of what needed, you know, what we needed to get and so forth. And, um, Betty, I, you don't know how much I appreciate you. So, thank you.
Thank you.
This is kinda funny. There was also a wedding going on. Y'all know how in Hateful, there's always five or six things going on. So, there was also a wedding going on. And everybody kept walking through Paint the Town like, "These people going to the wedding?" But anyway, we have two people that signed up that day for next year. That they were dressed up for the wedding, but they signed up to be a part next year. I've got their numbers, so here it is.
So, we have, you know, some people, of course, uh, they responded back. They can't, you know, get here, they're on the north side. I mean, we had, like I said, to be, to be real, real about the whole thing, uh, we had almost five-hundred people. And out of the five-hundred people, uh, just locally and resident, I would say we probably had about forty-five, fifty people just, uh, in the tri-city area. The rest of them came from all other areas. So, uh, it's amazing that, uh, and they love Hateful. So, you know, especially the brewery, they, some of them weren't really like, "Wow, what a thing." So, uh, let me just run down, because I don't, I want y'all to know how many people we had uh, that served us in any way. Uh, it could be very small, or it could be dump, large donations. Uh, the largest one we got was two thousand and then four-hundred dollars of snacks and everything. And then, we had people that bought everything. Cortland Partners, they, they spent so much money. And they were just here to serve. And they said, "No, we're gonna do it this way." So, we want it to look right. So, they are just amazing. So, Porsche Care Network, H-Cops, Delta Airlines SEM, Delta Airlines Wells Fargo, Cortland Partners, Madison Ollie, Covet, Target, Chick-fil-A, Donahue Lewis Funeral Home, Alpro Muffler, and Bragg, Home Depot, Peachtree Parkin, Johnny's Pizza, Team Pelkey, City of Hateful. And some, I think there's some Hateful United Methodist Church members as well. Um, and then, Hateful Cares, uh, our whole volunteer group. Chapman Drugs, Veterans Outreach, and Cortland Partners. I think I said them twice. But anyway, and then we had one little girl that, and she couldn't come. Her name's Anna. She is a sweet little girl. She's sixteen years old. She's now, uh, a, she's a high school graduate. Let's see, well, she might have been fifteen. And she's Hispanic. And she wanted to come and help us the, uh, the first year of Paint the Town by herself. She came the second year. She came the third year. And she came back the fourth year, because she, she just wanted to serve. And she thought this was just a great community to do and to help other people, especially our, uh, senior citizens and people that may, you know, fallen on bad luck, you know, or medical situations or financial situations and everything. So, um, I hope that Hateful Cares has mentored them, mentor her. And she brought in, she brought another girl in too. So, we're hoping that we extend that out to, you know, that population of our...
She was walking through the park the first year we started. And she came up and said, "Well, can I join?" And she said, "But..."
So, I just wanna thank you all. I want to thank the city, uh, city manager for allowing the applications to be set up there. And your, you know, your staff, you know, could help them a little bit and say, "Oh, if you give this, contact Linda Murray." Thank you so much for doing that. I hope that you're, you know, you're excited that we have done, uh, a revitalization project for the city. Uh, in all total, we have done thirty-six houses. And over a span, if you wanna look at it over the four years, it's, uh, within a five-day period of each year, that was twenty days. Twenty days doing thirty-five houses. So, I just, uh, want to thank you.
Now it's my turn. Don't you go anywhere. Because you were, you were one of the persons instrumental who started this Paint the Town, Linda, and without you, it couldn't happen. And you worked your fingers to the bone to make this happen. There are so many details that go along with this and so many, I mean, the list of things that need to be accomplished to make this happen are phenomenal. And it takes a real strong leader to make that happen. And we've got a leader in Linda Murray. So, Linda, on behalf of the City of Hateful, I thank you very much for your hard work and your dedication to Paint the Town.
Got money in here?
Yeah.
Thank you again.
Next one.
Thank you, council.
I'm sure that was more than two dollars.
All right, thanks again to everyone that had a part of, uh, the Paint the Town project. It truly does make a difference, one house at a time. And the people's foods, houses, uh, get the treatment. It, it's a life-changing thing for them. So, thanks again for everybody who had any part of that. At this time, I will call a public hearing to order. This is consideration and action on a special use, uh, application for Hilton Hotels. The background is, the issue of airport parking services being offered by the Hilton Hotel was brought to the city manager's attention by a local citizen. The process outlined in ordinance number two-zero-one-three-dash-zero-two requires a public hearing to be conducted. And then, the city council approve a special use permit to allow the use. The staff's report is attached to the agenda tonight. And given the long, long-time business practice established at this location and the significant economic benefits that result from the activities at the, uh, Airport Hilton Hotel, staff recommends approval of this, of this request. So, at this time, I'll open the floor to public comments, either for or against this. And I'll start on my right. Does anyone have any comments or questions? And my left. Thank you. Yes, sir.
I better be, or I'm here in trouble at work.
All right. Okay, everybody hear me?
Yeah, let me turn this around.
All right, so guys, fine. All right, well, first of all, mayor and council, thank you for taking this under advisement and consideration. We appreciate your time. You know, just a little background for those of you who don't know. Hilton has been part of the community since nineteen sixty. And the current Hilton has been here since nineteen eighty-nine. You know, we, we have almost three-hundred team members, two-hundred-and-ninety-two many of who live right here in the city. And, uh, yeah, as the mayor said in his statement, we do contribute. We generate through occupancy and property tax, about six-hundred, just over six-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars in the last fiscal year in taxes. You know, we've had over a hundred-and-seven-thousand people come through our doors, uh, stay over guests just this year. And that's a hundred-and-seven-thousand people that are exposed to Hateful. I know they like, a lot of our guests like to come downtown now to some of the brewery, the new, uh, the new restaurants. So, you know, and that's really what we wanna do. We wanna be part of the community and connect. You know, this, the parking overall, uh, is a really small part of our business. But it's important, and this is important, although it is a very small piece. Because, you know, it helps us reinvest in the property. Over the next three years, I think we've got about twenty million dollars worth of work on the books to reinvest and keep the hotel fresh and keep the north side of the airport relevant. And, um, you know, in particular, in parking, you know, we, we really spend a lot of this money, again, uh, to make sure that we have the right cameras. We have, uh, comply with not just the letter, but the spirit of the ordinance to keep the area safe. Uh, we have, uh, security in our parking lot. And we work very closely, uh, with the chief and his team to ensure that, you know, um, that our parking lot and our guests who park there, uh, don't have issues. I, I, I don't know if many of you are aware, but in the surrounding hotels and the surrounding communities had massive breakouts and break-ins of cars. We did not experience that, uh, in our hotel and our, in our parking lot. Again, vigilance makes people know, do not come to Hateful, right? For the wrong reasons, come for the right reasons. Uh, so, I would ask if, uh, this gets approved and we assure council and the mayor that we'll, uh, comply with all the limits that are entailed in this. It is inventory controlled. For example, the last week in July, there was a group that we know will drive in. And we have shut off, uh, all of this, uh, any, we would shut off any of this parking for those, uh, what we call blackout days. So, it's true that, you know, our priorities are over our guests. Our guests are coming for weddings and functions in our meeting space, our restaurants, and of course, our team members, uh, so that they can park right on the property.
Okay?
Thank you, man.
Thank you. Any other comments on my left? Okay, staff, any staff comments regarding this?
Could you have our report? And I think Bill may have a word or two.
So, here, David, I'll try to read since the report is lengthy. Ordinance twenty-thirteen-oh-two was adopted as an economic development incentive. Existing hotel and all its developments could deserve ten percent of their parking, its excess parking, in exchange for complying with the landscape requirements of the ordinance. And that was approved, curb appeal, as per the landscape, where it's fair landscape. I did a zoning certificate on the Hilton sometime back, and I had an altus survey. That was basis of the findings in the report. They do comply with landscape requirements. They don't have excess parking in the deficit of eleven spaces. But they have a total of five-hundred-and-twenty-six spaces on the site. They're asking for thirty spaces. And if you think about occupancies in the airport area, the market, high eighty percent occupancy is doing very well. So, on any given day, ten percent of those spaces, they readily would be available. And that would be over fifty. They're only asking for thirty. There's six criteria in the ordinance for evaluating a special use permit for airport parking. I'll run through those quickly. Purchased in that own surrounding development of adjacent properties. Transportation network serving this hotel location is high five. The exit-enter ramps are right there. Still in road where it quickly cut through traffic is a lot less direct. Very likely would not be used. The, um, capacity to accommodate the use, again, they reserve thirty spaces. These, uh, are not come as, uh, they're not business site, we get parking space. They're reserved in advance. So, if they didn't have thirty spaces, they would have to shut down reservations for parking in that time period. This is a highly developed, uh, commercial node of Hateful. Use is consistent with other commercial uses in the vicinity. And again, the, uh, landscape compliance, Hilton happens to be a very well-masculated property, unlike some other hotel properties in the vicinity that have not taken advantage of this incentive. The recommendation based on those findings is for approval of the special use permit recommendations.
Thank you, man.
Well...
Council, any questions or comments? Or either the applicant or Will?
I have a question. Dave, I don't know. Um, is this run third-party, or do you run this through the Hilton?
We use a third-party website, but we run it, you know, they pay us.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so it's not a different...
They have a lobby to do that, so...
Okay, so it's not a different shuttle that shuttles them back and forth?
It's not, it's our current shuttle fleet.
Okay, so it's not adding more shuttle of significant community? It's the same amount that normally we go into the airport?
Right, we're using vacant seats on the, uh, already scheduled ones.
Okay. And so, you're just asking for thirty? Even though it says ten percent, that'd be fifty-three?
Yeah, historically, we would not want to extend more than that.
Okay.
Just given the ratio of flying traffic versus flying.
Okay.
Uh, David, did I also understand you have to have a reservation to park, uh, for parking around?
That's, that's correct.
Okay. Just drive, you can't just drive in and say, "Take me to the airport."
Yeah, unless you're a hotel guest.
Okay, thanks, man.
Any other questions? That being said, I'll close the, uh, public hearing on that. Is anyone prepared to make a motion on this item? Motion to approve, motion to approve. Is there a second?
How second?
Second discussion. All right, if there being none, all fair to the motion, raise your right hand. All of those same sign, motion carries.
Thank you for being a good, good and supportive of the community.
Absolutely.
I appreciate it.
Appreciate what you do.
Those same shuttles bring people to the restaurants and stuff. We see it downtown. Really appreciate it.
Uh, next item is, uh, first reading of ordinance two-zero-one-six-dash-one-eight. This is the extended state, uh, ordinance. Council tabled this item until July nineteenth to allow the planning commission to evaluate and discuss this item. Staff has now reviewed the attached ordinance of the planning commission and the planning commission's regulations for attach. Planning commission supported the attached version, it's redlined, and staff concurs as well. In addition, staff would also like to request council entertain a proposal for a new extended state project near the existing state bridge location off of Norman Ferry. Representatives from a former prosper plan to the present and review the ten-to-twelve-million-dollar facility that would be constructed if council were to adopt a proposed ordinance. such a project would obviously be of great interest to the city to improve our existing tax base. At this time, I have staff comment on this, or you a little background?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, if I may, basically, we had, at your request, gone back to the planning commission and spoken with them directly about the impact of this proposal. They reviewed the ordinance and provided the comments back to you that are in their packet with the redlined proposal. Staff is very excited that we're bringing this forward, because it means new tax base and new investment in the city and a quality product, and without getting into all of the technical aspects, which we are certainly more than prepared to respond to, I'd like to ask if it's okay with the mayor and council that we have the person that we've been talking with come forward and show you the project that they would like to put in our city. They made this presentation to the planning commission, and it was well-received, and I think it will hopefully go a long way to alleviate concerns. There is every desire and every effort being made to raise the bar here in Hayfield, to do things that will make us proud as a community and make us a destination near this extremely outstanding economic engine we call the International Airport. So, we have three rules of real estate going for us, location, 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 and with that comes the responsibility and stewardship, the balance, and I believe that the people who are representing this project here will bring some great balance to our city and some great investment, and with your okay, I would like to ask them to present their project so you can be fully informed and the public can be fully informed as to what it is the staff is proposing.
Yeah, gentlemen?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Mr. Whitson, thank you. My name is Bob, I represent Epsom Hotels, we own the State Bridge Suites as well as the best western across from the Porsche plant, and we're closing Town Place Suites by Marriott, next to the State Bridge Suites, and I know the mayor, the council, and a lot of the residents had concerns about extended stay, and I think it's better if I show you what kind of project we're proposing instead of you telling me. So, if you don't mind, Mayor?
Before you start, I want one technical issue. When we finished up with the Hilton thing, I stated that we closed the public hearing, and I intended that to mean that we closed the public hearing on the Hilton item, so as a formality, I will reopen the public hearing for this matter, I apologize for that oversight, it's a technical issue.
I followed you, sir.
I'm going to start off showing a little bit of a small video of our Town Place Suites.
We're going places, off and away, growing, growing gone, expanding, rethinking, advancing, faster than our competitors can say, second place, the award is coming, no big surprise. According to J.D. Power, we are the best, and Business Travel News agrees, voting us number one extended stay. Not one, but three years in a row.
No matter how many awards we win, our lovable personality stays the same. With a warm hello, small surprises, kind gestures, and real giving to those in need, we like to make people feel special.
All just because.
When it comes to decor, exciting changes are underway. Our revamped public spaces invite next-gen travelers to stay, work, and play. With an upbeat vibe and thoughtful features throughout, our comfy suites are redesigned for guests to live life uninterrupted, including an incredible Alpha Closet that we created with a Container Store, and the first in the industry, and a big win for extended stay guests loaded with lots of storage options, so guests can feel more put together and a twin to closet envy.
We're getting our name out there with our national marketing campaign. In airports near and far, up, up, and away we go. Taking Town Place Suites into height.
Hot breakfast and our new prototype pork plow, these are just a couple of the things happening for this brand. Come along with us for the ride to 500 hotels by 2020. We're going places.
So, we've secured the rights to Town Place Suites, a 20-year license, Marriott has come out to look at the site, they've approved the site and everything, and we've done some work on the site plan and some drawings, obviously, we have not gotten too deep into it until the city has a chance to approve the project, but I wanted to show you a little bit about where we're proposing. So this next slide right here shows a proposed location of the Town Place Suites, the bigger footprint is the State Bridge, and to the right of it, to the top, is what we're proposing, a new seven-story, 100-room hotel Town Place Suites. This will give you some elevation of what the exterior of the building will look like, again, it's a seven-story, a flat roof, this is the front elevation, and then these are the two sides, and then next one would be the back elevations. Recently, last year in June, there was a brand-new Town Place Suites that opened up, and I was able to get some pictures from the website, that's, I'm sorry, let me show you the layout of what we're proposing as far as the rooms. We're going to have a mixture of studio rooms, which are going to meet the new proposed requirements from the city of 400 square feet. We're also going to have some one-bedroom suites, and then also two-bedroom suites. And in the one-bedroom and two-bedroom, you're going to have separate sleeping areas, you'll have basically a small kitchen, you'll have a small living area, sitting area. These are some of the pictures from the new Town Place Suites that opened up in New in, like, the Cancer Center facility, it gives you kind of an idea of what the finishes will look like, each Town Place Suite, the finish, the color scheme, is a little bit different. We, Marriott requires us to hire a design team to design the interior and exterior of the hotel to the specs that they approve ultimately. So, but this gives you a good idea of what it's going to look like. This is what the bedroom will look like, and there should be some pictures of the kitchen area. So if you've had a chance to see the State Bridge Suites firsthand, this is basically State Bridge Suites combination. It's by Marriott, so the name recognition is higher than State Bridge Suites, they have a higher loyal following, they have more rewards members, so they generally do better than State Bridge Suites. I have one more video, this video shows actual finishes, what the work area, what the room will be like, what the public area will be like, so it gives you an idea of what the project, finished project is going to look like.